City Council meeting of May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two to order, roll call please.
Alderman Ames, here. Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Currielli.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Sisnarsky.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
And Mayor, please.
Here, I declare a quorum, please stand, join Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes of May fifth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, corrections, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda this evening? Okay, I do have a couple of written communiques. Uh, we have a thank you letter from the Calvary Lutheran Church. They're very appreciative of our leadership that guides and directs our community. They're very grateful of the council for their unconditional governance that gives Wooddale inspiration to us all. You continue to guide us in decisions. There are many people serving our community that we want to remember today. Uh, we give thanks. We give thanks, Lord, for City Clerk Lynn Currielli, Treasurer Sandra Porch, and our Alderman. And many other people who work very hard to make sure our community functions well. Bless them and give them the wisdom that they need to carry out their duty. Also have a letter from the Child's Voice, just thanking us for the support of their annual golf event from Kate Lawson. Okay, under Mayor's report. We got, uh, an item for the DuPage Senior Counsel and Wooddale Food Pantry donation requests. I believe we all should have that copy of the letter. Do I have any, uh, anything in this motion? The conversation?
Yeah.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Was there a motion?
At the moment, no motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to donate both to the Wooddale Food Pantry and the DuPage Senior Council, uh, in an amount equal to five thousand dollars for each, uh, organization. That is my motion.
Do we have, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Questions, comments? Roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes, but I, I didn't get a chance to ask my question. You jumped right to it, I was moving my microphone. Do I have a chance to ask a clarifying question?
I didn't see you, okay.
Okay. Um, just like for future requests, can we have like a, um, bare minimum? Like some, some bare minimum facts that would help us make better informed decisions? I mean, I think another, someone, someone said it better. It's very easy to be generous with someone else's money, right? Um, and so I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this. I just, for me, want to see up in the future, some stats on the organization, right? Like what, how much of it actually goes to salaries and how much of it actually goes directly to the agency, the organization? So that would be just, I don't know if we have to, if we have to do anything, like a motion? Or is that just?
No, no, actually, I, I mentioned something to the manager. Going forward, we should have, when we have one of our workshops or something, have some kind of discussion on if we put a line item in the budget because we do get the, the high school teams and the bands when they go to Nationals and stuff like that. So set a limit, that's the limit.
Just some criteria, like what's your objective, you know, things like that. I mean, I got a, I got a five oh one C three, and you can donate to me anytime. Uh, but, uh, it's a bad politician joke, actually. Uh, but no, I, all serious, if we could have some bare criteria?
No, I already.
I think there are letters written by both organizations.
Yeah, they were good, these guys are good.
One second, guys.
Sorry.
The manager will bring it up at a future thing. Alderman Sorrentino, you have something?
Yeah, I was just reiterating the fact that both organizations did write letters with specific facts and figures, and I believe the council, uh, was invited, and it's an ongoing invitation, uh, any Tuesday or Saturday morning, you're welcome to go to the Food Pantry on Wooddale Road at the center and see firsthand the work they do. Uh, and I think you'll be quite impressed, and each week, the numbers do increase.
They're very busy.
And I know, uh, firsthand that the Northern Food Bank is running low on meat. And I know firsthand that the Food Pantry has gone in their pocket to buy meat. And, uh.
Right.
There's nobody there to reimburse them, so they count on our donation.
I just want to clarify the record, it had nothing to do with this. Yeah, it had nothing to do with this.
Okay.
Yeah, no, 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 I knew that, uh, say, nothing to do with this, just, I, in general, because we're getting a lot of requests, so. Just to clarify the record, I am a four.
And that's where we'll have a simple discussion on it. And set a max donation because we are taxpayer money, so.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
All right, so you were called.
And that was a yes?
Were you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes.
Thank you.
All right, next. Committee appointments, I'm going to read them all off. And then we'll, uh, make a motion. Building Code Board of Appeals, reapportment of Ron Herr for five-year term commencing in May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, expiring April thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Community Development Commission, reapportment of Dave Shimonik for a two-year term commencing May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and expiring on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Reapportment of Dave Woods for two-year term commencing May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and expiring on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Reapportment of Jamie Ochoa for two-year term, and he is also the chair, we need to make that motion here also. And Mr. Ochoa will be the Chair of CDC, commencing May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and expiring on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Streetscape and Economic Enhancement Committee, reapportment of Linda Lucania for a two-year term commencing May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, expiring on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Reapportment of Steve Micus for two-year term commencing May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, expiring April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Wooddale for Greener Tomorrow Committee, reapportment of Pat Semperetti for three-year term commencing May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and expiring on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Reapportment of Zakir Karashi for a three-year term commencing May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and expiring on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Stormwater Subcommittee of the Wooddale for Greener Tomorrow Committee, reapportment of Gil Berdard for a three-year term commencing May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and expiring April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Reapportment of Pet, Patricia Pinella for a three-year term commencing May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and expiring April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Reapportment of Clerk Lynn Currielli for a three-year term commencing May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and expiring on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Board of Police and Fire Commissioners, reapportment of Sabrina Abresia for a three-year term commencing May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and expiring April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Police Pension Board, reapportment of Dante El de Julius for a two-year term commencing May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, expiring on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Good motion.
I believe they're motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, City Manager's Report.
I don't know if I'm going to jinx it, but I'll start the report off with the warm weather is finally here, and a full special event schedule has returned to the city of Wooddale for the twenty twenty-two season, uh, starting, uh, this Memorial Day weekend coming up. We have our first concert on Friday, May twenty-seventh, at Community Square in the corner of Wooddale Road and Commercial Avenue. Later that weekend, on Monday, May thirtieth, we have our Memorial Day Parade. The parade will start at eleven AM with the route that begins at Addison Road at Elizabeth Drive, heading east to Irving Park Road, actually, I should be heading north, um, to Irving Park Road. Um, this summer, we also have a full lineup of concerts, cruise nights, and movies in the park. Lastly, we are excited to bring back Prairie Fest, um, for twenty twenty-two. It will be a full four-day festival from July twenty-eighth through July thirty-first, and we have more information on the website, wooddale.com. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Now, if no objections, undertake a motion for three items on the consent agenda.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay. There was no objections, correct?
That's all money.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
And Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. Next, need a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, an ordinance annexing certain territory commonly known as five N, five ten, and five N, five fourteen, North Pine Lane to the city of Wooddale, DuPage County, Illinois. Item number two, an ordinance approving a lot consolidation and map amendment rezoning property commonly known as one sixty Pine Lane, Wooddale, Illinois, six oh one nine one. Item number three, a resolution approving agreement between the city of Wooddale Morton Salt Incorporated for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three bulk rock salt purchase in an amount not to exceed seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty cents.
I'll make that motion, second.
Okay, motion is second, roll call please.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, Committee Chairman Reports, Planning, Zoning, and Building, Alderman Woods.
Well, I have three reports, Mayor. First, an ordinance approving comprehensive rewrite of the city's Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, in chapter seventeen, that is city code, and rezoning of certain properties. That is my motion along with some amendments.
Go ahead.
To that emotion. Amendments to that motion, although it does have a motion. Uh, one, that Manufacturing Limited be added as a permitted use to the C two A district. Two, indoor retail sales of goods be added as a permitted use in C three district. Three, that the following language be added to additional standards of the C three district. That being, any existing non-conforming use, lot or structure that was non-conforming at the time of adoption of this UDO may continue without the requirements to conform to the additional standards and parking requirements adopted herein. Four, that the minimum lot area for C three district is thirteen thousand square feet. Five, that the minimum lot depth for C three district is a hundred and thirty feet. Six, the notice requirements for public hearings, amendments, special use permits, and variations shall be, that the city shall make best efforts where applicable to provide mailed notice to all property owners with two hundred and fifty feet of this specific property, and further provide that any irregularity or mistake concerning mailed notices shall not otherwise affect the validity of any legislative action. Seven, section seventeen, two oh two C. Six, providing that specific public bodies are exempt from application fees, be stricken and reserved for future use. Eight, section seventeen, point two oh four C, five A I one, be modified, increasing the ve- variation percentage to no more than fifty percent. Section seventeen, two oh four C, five A I two, be modified, increasing the variation percentage to no more than forty percent. Sections, uh, and number ten, section seventeen, seven oh four A, two B, shall be changed to include the following initial phrase, except as otherwise approved by the city council through its approval of a planned unit development. That is the.
That's the motion.
That is, that is, uh, the motion.
Second. Is there a correction? Okay, we have a motion, second. Alderman Catalano. Any questions? Roll call. Oh, Alderman Jacob?
Uh, I don't know if I saw it here, the definition of a junkyard, I had a.
So the, the.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Oh, thank you. Uh, the, uh, the definition, uh, which we spelled out in the original, uh, amendment to the first emotion at the committee meeting level.
Okay.
Maintained and stayed in the, the UDO, so it's already been incorporated.
What is the language on that?
Mr. Bond, do you want to?
Do you have it? I don't know. It is in the, uh.
Marshall, have it?
Oh, no.
Chairman?
Well, Mr. Marshall, do you have?
Mr. Zubak has it also, I thought.
I, I have it here.
You have it, okay, you're fine, yeah.
Uh, definition, junkyard, uh, was two or more inoperable vehicles without valid current registration, or I take, strike the current, stored on a zoning lot shall be considered a junkyard. So that original language that was in there with the two cars is, is still in the, the language.
But it does have without valid current registration.
No.
No, we, uh, we didn't, we didn't incorporate that.
Follow up?
Okay, um, okay, that's fine.
Anything else? Roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes.
That passes. Next, uh, ordinance approving and causing publication of the city of Wooddale twenty twenty-two official zoning map. That is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Uh, next, an ordinance approving amendment, uh, amendments to the building code in chapter twelve of the city code related, related to design guidelines for development of commercial and industrial properties, and to the form of the city's building permit application. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions on this? Roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Excuse me. Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Sisnarsky?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Messina?
Yep, I have, uh, four reports, Mayor.
Go ahead.
First is a resolution approving, resolution approving an agreement between the city of Wooddale and trade services contractors for phase two renovations and additions to the Public Works facility. Just going to pass it off, actually, to the director.
Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, on Tuesday, we shared with the council, uh, FQC's recommendation letter for award of the various trade contracts, uh, for phase two of the Public Works facility renovations. Uh, this is the final phase, so tonight's meeting, we're going to review the bids, we'll discuss a few of the alternate bids which were received, we'll answer any questions the council has, and ultimately, we'll be looking for a motion to award the trade contracts as recommended by FQC, or as otherwise discussed by the council. So beginning with the base bids, I'm not going to go through all of these because I believe we've discussed the scope at length by this point. But this first column here is the, uh, the various trades. The second column is the budgeted amount from the conceptual design budget. Third column is the low bid that was received. These have all been verified or corrected by FQC over the past week. Uh, the fourth column there is the variance between the bid received and the budget, the conceptual design. You see, no parentheses means that it came in, the budgeted amount, or parentheses means that it was above the budgeted amount. And this last column here is the apparent low bidder. So you'll see, some of them are up, some of them are down, uh, compared to the budget, but just a few key items to discuss, you see steel is slightly higher than what was budgeted. Naturally, you can assume that, uh, the cost of steel has increased since the conceptual design budget was put together back in March of twenty twenty. Uh, glazing is higher than we originally anticipated, largely due to the configuration of the windows and the valuable storage building, but FQC believes that, uh, we can provide some value engineering options that may bring that number down somewhat, closer to the original budget amount. And same for painting, the paint which was spec, uh, we've actually received other recommendations from the low bidder, which may be able to save some money on that end as well. So it continues onto this page, you can ignore the shading, that's just for our reference. The number that's important here is this bottom line figure here. Uh, we are approximately four hundred and sixty-five thousand under the budgeted amount, uh, from the conceptual design phase now, as you tally all of the bids and incorporate contingency and FQC's fees. Fencing, if you recall, is not included in this bid release, we're submitting that separately under a separate permit, so that number that was included in conceptual design carries over to this budget amount as well. Are there any questions that we can answer on any of the base bids?
Anyone have a question? Any questions? Alderman Jacob?
Just one question, the fencing, how come we're holding off on the fencing?
Go ahead, Mr. Lane.
We're still finalizing that design, uh, as well as the amendments to the UDO, uh, so that will be submitted here in the near future, uh, and be incorporated to the guaranteed maximum price.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, need a motion?
I, I, we have several alternatives to discuss, which we can hold off.
I'll do one on one. Okay, that's fine.
So keeping in mind this number here, uh, that we can potentially even increase through various value engineering, uh, alternatives, uh, we'll move on, as well as it's five percent contingency as we did in phase one, so not all of that may need to be used. Uh, we'll look, take a look at the alternates which are recommended, there's three of them. The first we discussed back when we awarded phase one is the re-roofing of the seven twenty building. This was not originally included in the conceptual design budget, although it, it should have been, so for that is an add of approximately five hundred and sixty-four thousand. The second and third alternates, uh, our engineers tell us are required by code, and that is to provide new fire alarm system and new carbon monoxide system. So obviously, if it's required by the code, our hands are somewhat tied there, but those are adds forty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty, and two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and forty-three. So we're verifying with our engineer that those are in fact required by code, and, uh, if they are, we'll proceed with them, but if not, obviously, we won't have to. And those are in the existing seven twenty building. So these are the three alternates which were issued that staff is recommending we move forward with in addition to the base bid.
And what is the total on those three items?
I'll, I'll give that, to that at the end.
Okay.
There are, were several al- other alternates which, uh, were submitted that we are not recommending or have no recommendation on. Uh, one is a new monument sign that was designed by Williams, we feel that is an unnecessary expense at this time, we can provide something for much cheaper than that. Uh, replacing the existing sectional doors, we don't feel is needed, we have painting them in the base bid. Uh, the epoxy flooring for the existing seven twenty building in the garage area, the seven twenty building, we feel there may be an option to bring those costs down, that, uh, we can present to council later on. And the painting of the existing building as well, we don't feel is necessary at this time. So just to show that there were other alternates which.
Question for you. Mr. Lane?
Yes, sir.
So on the floor, I thought we, uh, when we redid, uh, the drain at seven twenty, didn't we do something with the floor already?
We've been patching it along, uh.
So we didn't do the whole, it was just, uh, center with the drain, that's all we did?
Correct, so replacing of the concrete around the trench drain is actually included in the base bid. This would be to coat the entire floor with an epoxy coating, we're having a lot of spalling and cracking, uh, so it may be necessary at some point down the road, but we think there's other options that we may be able, able to provide at a cheaper price.
Okay, Alderman Messina, do you have any?
Yeah, I just, I guess that is more of a general question, so would these come in as like modifications to the capital budget?
Yes.
Maybe it's.
Mr. Lane, go ahead.
So there is some contingency if we wanted to adjust the scope somewhat, but, uh, anything that would come in as a change order would be approved by council if we were to add any of these at any point.
A change order?
Okay.
I just, I just know how to categorize it, a change order, okay.
Any other, okay, go ahead.
So moving on to the total.
Wait, hold on, hold on. Alderman Jacob, question?
Yeah, the two items about painting, I mean, since we're doing all this work, why wouldn't, why wouldn't you recommend not painting the garage?
Mr. Lane?
Vehicle maintenance area. We need it at this time. These are for the seven twenty buildings. This garage, which is in painted now, and you've been living with it for so many years.
Could you identify yourself for the camera and your microphone? Pull it a little closer to me.
Sorry about that.
Okay, I'm Fred Moreno, I'm with Frederick Quinn Construction, uh, the CM for the project. Um, so, the existing building isn't painted, uh, the seven twenty building, and this is the, uh, vehicle storage area as well as the mechanics bay. Uh, so it can be painted, uh, but the paint that was specified, I think, is a little bit more than necessary, that the architect specified. So I've talked to the painters, we can reduce those costs quite a bit, but I thought we would, uh, look at that, make sure that the paint is correct, uh, review that once more with the architect, make sure he's okay with it, and then we can present those costs to you. So we're saying not to award those alternates at this time until we do a little bit more investigation on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before I move on? Alderman Ames?
Um, I know we had talked before about the mezzanine in the seven twenty building and the elevator and all that, and do we really, you know, since we're expanding, we've got this big, brand-new building, do we really need the mezzanine and therefore even spend money on an elevator? So has that been addressed?
Go ahead, Mr. Lane.
Excuse me, yeah, uh, the mezzanine is existing in the seven twenty building, so it's there, uh, and to use it and meet code, you have to put an elevator to it. So the elevator is included in the bid.
Okay, so.
Follow up, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, so in order to eliminate the mezzanine and the elevator, it's not really an option to no longer use the mezzanine, to not have to do the elevator?
It would probably be more money to remove the mezzanine than it would to just install the elevator, and you can always use additional storage.
It just becomes storage space, yeah.
And we have.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Lang.
Thank you, Mayor. So looking at the total construction budget, you see the first two phases here along with the pre-construction fee. Phase one includes the alternates that were previously approved, this is the base bid for phase two, and then including the contingency and FQC's fees and markup, the total construction budget is just over twelve million. And then if the, the alternates were included as recommended, it would push that construction budget to just above thirteen million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand. We did budget thirteen million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, which in the CIP, although that figure does include the soft costs, you know, which includes things like the architect's fees, the moving fees, temporary site utilities, things like that. But we did discuss that some of those items have already been expensed, some won't be necessary, so although it will likely be higher than the CIP budgeted amount, we'll, we'll look to correct some of those numbers on the soft costs and present those to you when we come back with the guaranteed maximum price amendment.
Okay. Any other?
Nope, that's the end of my presentation, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, if I heard you correctly, so the budget at thirteen million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars is all-inclusive architectural engineering site, right, all that, so...
Correct.
Which is already expended, so that thirteen number minus what we've already spent, paid, right, is what's left over to pay the thirteen...
So this is total project cost, some of, some of these thirteen million in the construction budget have already been expensed as well from phase one, this is just total project cost.
So both are tailing the same way, all, okay.
Correct, yeah. Apples to apples.
Thank you.
That doesn't include the cost of the land.
Correct, does not include the cost of the property.
Any other questions? Need a motion? Alderman Jacob?
But it did sound like some of those other items you were not recommending now might be coming back to us for recommendation, correct?
Mr. Lang?
Those other alternates, your...
The other ones that we said we're not doing now, the ones you did not recommend currently?
Mr. Lang?
Correct, yeah, we don't recommend those at this present time, if we find a way to, to, you know, find an option that seems feasible, we'll present it to you once again for your, for approval to add it on to the total project costs.
I'll add a note to that, if you don't mind. So, with the, some of the things that we've looked at in the project, we, we think there's some ways of talking with our low bidders to actually save some more money, or pull some things out, so if we can save some money there, hopefully that, that savings will help pay for anything additional that we might want, without changing the total.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yeah, Director Lang, you'd be willing to do this in stages if you had to, the extra stuff?
Mr. Lang?
Yeah, absolutely, any one of these alternates could be, could be done down the line, really. It may make more sense to do some while we already have contractors mobilized, but yeah, theoretically, any of these could be done later on.
Any other questions? All right, we need a motion now.
I'll make the motion. Second. For all four?
All four. Okay. Should we put a not to exceed amount?
Not to exceed thirteen million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars? In the aggregate? Thank you.
But that's with the extras that we have now, those aren't gonna go forward because we're making a portion, correct?
So I would defer to Attorney Bond on this, but I would just make the motion as it's written on the resolution approving the various trade contracts as recommended by Frederick Quinn's letter, and then we'll be coming back to you with the guaranteed maximum price amendment, which will have all of the soft costs included. That will be the main not to exceed figure for the entire...
Mr. Bond?
Okay, 'cause if you remember when we did the, the bid when we're doing it, putting it together, we knew there were a lot of different trades that were involved, and so the council approved those subjects to be negotiated as to the lowest bidder, those are attached to the resolution as an exhibit to the resolution with those trades and the amounts.
So are we good with the motion? Standard, we need to make it twelve million, three hundred and forty-two thousand, 'cause the thirteen million has the extras.
Yeah, if you're going to set a figure to it, then it would be the thirteen million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five.
I'll amend the motion to the twelve million, three hundred and forty-two thousand.
No.
Thirteen.
No, no, no. Your, your motion is good, that's why I'm, I'm just double-checking, so just because we make the motion doesn't mean you got the green light to do everything.
You give me plenty to work with, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
All right. Alderman Jacob?
I think for transparency's sake, we should probably let the residents know how we're paying for this and how much money we're saving by the alternate of having to build a totally new facility.
Taking out of your pension.
Mr. Wilson, you wanna speak to that a little bit? I know it was about if we were to have gone brand-new all the way through, I think, was it eight or ten million dollars more than... Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would have to pull out the exact numbers, but the initial concepts a few years ago that were done by Williams for a brand-new building, buying the land, demolishing the existing facility, and then building a brand-new facility, was north of twenty, I think it was around twenty-three to twenty-five million total. Yeah, I think it was probably twenty-three back then, but now with inflation and cost increases, it probably would have been north of twenty-five easily at this point.
Right, that's why I said eight million. And the funds are coming from?
Oh, sure, so you may recall, we did a bond issue backed by TIF revenue, so the money's coming out of the TIF funding, the Thorndale TIF, which is generated, the revenue is generated by the TIF itself, by the buildings itself, so, you know, we're not pledging sales tax, income tax, or any money that would come actually from any property owned by a resident, no residential properties are in the TIF, so it's all coming from the increment, the additional tax revenue generated by the appreciation of value of the, that industrial park that encompasses TIF one.
Go ahead, follow-up, Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, just, I just wanted to make sure, with that being said, we're not gonna have to tell the residents, the same thing we do with the wastewater treatment plant, that it has to be paid, you know, with the bonds.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, the, the TIF funding for these bonds is completely independent of the water fund, the water fund, water rate increases, anything like that has nothing, zero, nada, zilch, nothing to do with these TIF bonds. So any conjecture that the water rate increase had anything to do with this building is not correct.
Okay?
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Rocco.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.